All right, with that being said, six o'clock. Get a site plan review. Faria Realty Trust, 625 Main Street, continuation from last month. Sir.
For the record, Chris Anderson, we're planning engineering. We were before the board last month for the project at 625 Main Street.
Yeah.
I believe the board is pretty familiar with this project at this point. At the last meeting, we continued in order to go back to the traffic committee to review the potential elimination of Water Street, which we have done. At the end of the day, it's the intent to maintain the plan as proposed before you tonight with a right turn exit only along Water Street to allow for more turning options in that area. With that being said, I think we reviewed it pretty extensively at the last meeting. So if there's any questions for the board?
Um, I get most of my question answered from them. As long as we get the thing squared away for Water Street with the right turn and then I think we both agreed that you're going to make some upgrades for the intersection with the traffic cameras or something?
No, we discussed that with the traffic committee today. And the traffic committee said, again, on the Water Street, as you come out, it'll be a swipe right, slight swipe right to encourage people to go right. We wanted it to be slight in the event that emergency vehicles need to take a left-hand turn. So the granite curb will be sloped so that the fire truck could go over it and take a left-hand turn if necessary. They said there's going to be no cameras at this time. The estimate was a lot of-
I think it was between 25 to 35,000.
35,000 is what we were told today. And with the traffic committee has said, we're not going to require any cameras to be done by you because the Water Street exit is going to be there. In the event that the odd event occurred that the planning board agreed to eliminate the Water Street's exit, which we didn't think was going to happen, then the town would pay half of the cost of the 35,000. We'd pay the other half of the cost. But since we're not eliminating the exit on the Water Street, they're not requiring cameras at all.
Well, they don't require anything. We require. I'm going to ask you to do the 50% match with them and the Water Street right turn only sign, Water Street exit.
We agree with the right turn only.
Yeah, I know. So what I'm saying is it's signage for the people that are using it. The signs can be ignored by the emergency vehicles.
The sign will be ignored by the emergency vehicles.
And I think we could still put up the 50% to upgrade that intersection.
Well, again, the discussion was because of the exit on the Water Street is going to be a very large expense because of the grading that's going to have to take place. And this is only an 18-unit development. That's what we've got. So that's what the traffic committee was considering, at least we discussed it. Because of the expense of that Water Street exit, that's why they were not requiring the cameras at this point because again-
I don't want to hear the sob stories.
Well, it's not a stop, sir.
It is. It is. It is. It always is.
Well-
The recommendation I have in front of me from the traffic committee is that, is to do the upgrade.
What day is that? Is there a date on it?
November 4.
Today's date, the traffic committee is saying to you to do the upgrade for cameras?
That's what they asked for and that it's up to this board to implement it.
Just so I get clear, as of today, from 1:00 this afternoon until now, now the traffic committee is asking for the cameras? Because that's the exact-
No, they left the option either or, or both.
Well, the members come-
That doesn't mean either or to you. That's either or for this board to decide.
Well, the discussion was-
The discussion happens with this board. They tell us what they'd like to see, then this board decides what we want to have happen.
Absolutely. I agree with that, but I just want to get it clear what the board left with us. Or at least the traffic committee left with us. And the traffic committee left with us, just their recommendation was that there's been no requirement of the cameras with the exit on Water Street. That is what they said to us at 1:00 today. They said, in the event, just no, no, you're not required to follow it, but in the event that your board chose to eliminate the Water Street exit, then the traffic committee's recommendation was that the developer pay one half. Now, your board, yes, can do whatever it wishes to do. You were looking for input from the traffic committee. I just want to make sure that the input we got at 1:00 is the same input that you're telling us now at 6:00.
I'm only one board member anyway, but I would want to see.
Well-
It does say what he says.
You know, it's, they tell one thing and then they went and this is a different thing and da, da, da. I think maybe if they took and the developer put half that money into escrow.
Right, or write in the decision somewhere. Traffic becomes a disaster that there are-
Write it into the decision that the money's there. If we don't need it, they can get the money back at the end or whatever.
Yeah, there's a million ways we could do it, but I think it should be part of the decision.
Yeah, well, that's fine.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Who paid for the traffic study?
They did.
Okay, that's all I have to say. I think we've got to change that.
That much? Yes. Mr. Phil.
I, um, I understand what you're saying.
I think that, I mean, I want to put this to bed tonight because this has been going on long enough for you guys. With that being said, this was another thing in the, in the works here. This is another twist. I would like to see that half the money, half that cost, was it, what do we say? Between 25 to 35,000 dollars?
It was a maximum up to half of 35,000.
Thirty-five, so what's half of 35, 17,500?
That is.
If you could put 17,500 into, write it into the decision for the, and then put that money into escrow.
For a year.
For a year to see what it is and then if we need it-
Hereafter occupancy.
Then we have that to go back and we can make the up, the town can match that half and we can go on from there.
If the town decides to go forward with the cameras within that one-year period, then the money would be used.
Yes, I think that's fair.
Agreed.
Okay, moving on. Next thing.
That's it? We're done?
We're done?
Will that you approve the plan with those requirements?
Um, do you want to work on the, on the agreement, on the decision?
Take a vote.
Sure, certainly.
Do we, if you want to work on the decision, then we can review the decision next meeting? Then we can vote on the decision after we review it? Instead of voting on the decision before we see it?
No, we can make a, we're going to approve the site plan contingent on approval of the decision.
Okay.
Right?
Sounds like a plan to me.
So approval of the site plan contingent upon an agreement?
Yes, on the decision.
But it's not approved yet.
Yes.
We haven't taken a vote.
Does somebody want to make the motion to approve the site plan?
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the site plan for Faria Realty Trust for 625 Main Street to include the recommendations of the traffic committee to have the exit on the Water Street with the right turn only and to escrow 50% of the cost share that was mentioned to the town of Clinton for the traffic detention cameras and enhanced signals, should they be required. That will be held in escrow for one year after full occupancy of the building. And if nothing comes of it, it'll be turned to the applicant. And I'd like to attach a copy of the traffic committee's report dated November 4, 2025, to that decision.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
We got to close, may.
Any public comment? He is closed. Second, all in favor?
All right.
Thank you.
Work on the decision. We'll see you next month and we can vote on that and then that's it.
Do you want me to send it to the attorney who reviews normally for you?
Yeah, send it to Mr. Costa and go from there.
Yeah, we get it before the meeting, I guess.
Try to get it before the meeting.
Oh, I'll get it before the meeting.
Okay.
Get it to Mr. Costa.
You'll get it before the meeting, but we gotta, you never get it till the meeting.
Gentlemen, thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. The site plan review for Atlanta Clunden, 678 Main Street. It's ought to be released. Hello?
Good evening.
Good. This is the one, this is the same plan that you gave us last month, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I asked you to get a new one. This is 11 years old.
I'm the one.
I think it's, yeah.
Let's just sit here in our packet.
Yeah, these small ones.
In the back of the packet there.
Yeah, but you can't read it. It's video false. Essentially, what I'm saying is that, I don't read them. I just can't read the data.
Really?
I couldn't read that this many years.
I can't, I can't read that.
Wait, it's a million years I couldn't read.
I can't even see the date on that.
What's that mean?
It's the same, it's a-
I see that whole one for a minute, please. No, this thing one, it's, oh.
I mean, look at the file, but let me bring the file to see. I didn't make my page, you didn't read one. And then it's what you say. I think that everything's, that's weird. That's what I got, but I, let me look at the, give me a second. If I have it, I have it, but I-
The date here. You don't have to see this. There, you can't see it.
Well, while we're working for that one, you have to see and you can tell us what you want to do and about that. You can have a seat and just tell us, you can tell us what you're going to do.
She says, and then she go take a look with the big plant.
Okay.
The new one, and then I gave everything to her when we went to the police, police plant. We went to the fireworks.
So how many cars are you looking to get? How many, how many cars are you looking to sell down there?
Fifteen cars.
How many?
Fifteen cars.
Fifteen?
Yes.
Well, enjoy. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. I see 10 parking spaces on one side and then I see maybe another two on the other side.
Okay.
And then is there something in the front?
Yeah, because John Hogan, he's given me this little paper over here. He's put 15 cars over here.
What's that?
Uh, John Rogers, the guy.
Yeah, he's, I know, I know John.
And then he gave it to me, and he says, maybe you can give it to me.
Fifteen cars.
What's going to happen inside the building?
Inside, we had to fix the side, the garage. And then the office, we will do some, big sub-then too, the bathroom.
All right, but what are you going to, what kind of business are you going to conduct in the building?
Building, we want to the south part.
Are you going to have, use the bays?
Yes.
For what?
The garage.
Yep.
Yeah, we change oil.
Okay, so you're an repair facility. Can't read how many square feet that is. We need that plan. Can I see the old plan again, please?
Yes.
So we need four spaces for that building, part of the building. You need five spaces parking for that building, less. So you're going to find five spaces for the occupancy of the building and then see what's left for sales, plus.
So that five gives you one, two, three, four, five, right? Gives you that, right? So most you could probably have is nine cars.
Yep. One, two, three, four, five, yeah. Yep, so nine, nine is the number.
Nine is the number?
Yep.
Okay, all good?
Don't they have to go to the selectmen first for this?
We have to do, we get to do the site plan review first.
Okay.
And then we give them the number with the license.
And then they approve.
Then they have to go to the selectmen to get the license, the car license.
When I bring this one for you, I'll bring tomorrow, this one for you. Because when I come over here and what you say, I can make one for my family flies. And then I know remember this, have this one, I mentioned that the new one with current state there.
She'll bring up the new one.
Yeah.
Bring the new one, so the new one's on file.
Okay.
With this, with being, that being said, we're going to have the nine, the nine, we're going to approve the site plan, well, we're going to vote on it, but for nine cars. That nine, those nine cars, you're going to have to mark those cars with a for sale sign in the windshield on the window or something on the car that's seen they're for sale.
Okay.
To go by, the building inspector is going to come by and they're going to do spot checks to see that there's not cars, other cars parked on there that aren't registered, that aren't insured, that aren't this, not that.
Okay.
So-
We can have nine cars.
You can have nine cars for sale.
Okay.
And then you have, then you have five cars in the front for employee parking.
Okay.
Or customer parking.
Or customer parking.
No more than 15 cars in the lot at one time.
All right, it's nine cars and then I can put over here for you when customers come.
Yep, yes. Make a motion to approve the site plan for 678 Main Street with the nine-car, nine-car sales license.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
All right, we don't have lauders here to record everything.
Oh, it's been a bit.
All right.
Ross, there.
Ross, sir.
Good luck.
Now you're going to have to go to the selectmen to get the license. They're going to approve the license. Okay?
I can tomorrow, tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Good luck.
Thank you.
Moving on, we're in full of Paul Broadmeyer, 385 West Boylston Street. Go ahead.
Did you do the box?
Right. Yep.
Near the same, um, studio, um, or, um, a bit of a caution. Okay. The devastation is, the review of this project, so I filed the site plan last week with the planning board for review on December 2. And I took this opportunity to come before this evening to briefly discuss the details of this plan because it's somewhat difficult to extract that information from with some advanced knowledge. So what we're doing here basically is applying for and propose 15 acre solar farm under site plan review. That will be heard at your next meeting. What's different about this is that it has, it has access issues. It's basically to landlocked Carson. Most of you will probably recognize this area here that's shaded in green. That is your recently kept landfill. And that's access, a little driveway off the South Middle Road. And that driveway is also shared by the state for their sludge disposal facility. What you get beyond the second bend, it becomes a haul road for public works department to get to a piece of land that they own up to the rear. They use that for beef collection and mulch preparation. We have an agreement with the selectmen to make use of this haul road as a power easement. So we have held off on our final terms of agreement with that easement until we find out specifically exactly what we can build and what we have because there's something called pilot agreement that's associated with this. So we, the pilot agreement is a pain in the head of taxes. So we have to negotiate agreement with the selectmen in terms of what this is worth for tax revenue. And it turns out that this 50 acres is a part of a 28 acre piece. It's by a Canadian deal by the town line between Sterling and Clinton. So there's another 38 acres in Sterling that is also going to be solar farm. And we have two additional properties beyond that. Which will be solar farm. So here's the plenty piece here. We have two more pieces up here, the third one over behind us, the allotment area. That will be future solar farms. This is entirely within the limits of town of Sterling. We brought before their planning board this past summer and got it approved in September. We're currently before their conservation commission to get approval to construct this because obviously with all these what would it be, there's a good deal of times you're paying the permission. The public that have had me what was on, there is some wells on the adjoining land which is owned by the town. So it should be a bit simpler for us in terms of conservation approval. We've got a bit going on there too, some access and so forth because historically, this property has always been access of the West Boylston Street. This is a ground private access. It's about an eighth of a mile west of the DCR forestry building. Where we cross over about 40 feet here of DCR open space, at which we can cross over the railroad tracks. And from there, we cross over yet another DCR piece of open space. We don't own this to get to our Sterling property from there down into Clinton. That's historically always been our access. That will continue to be. So we're accessing here and our power is being generated in the solar farm. And then opening through this, that will be a power easement to South Middle Road where our interconnect will be with National Grid. All of the power from Sterling, it goes out here to National Grid. There's nothing.
Nothing going to Sterling?
Nothing, but they have a municipal line company that they were interested. So it'll all go to National Grid. Basically, that's it. That's, that's what we're trying to work toward here. It's been a number of years trying to get through all of the red tape to get the pieces put together.
Sure.
But we think we're following it here. So we're bringing the plan before you folks. For your approval of the site review and then it will be on to the conservation commission for your approval as well. So I'm not looking for any consensus of opinion in the back of your folks tonight. I'm just sharing you that information. So when you open your packet of your meeting next month, you won't be unfolding this going wondering how it all works. That's how it's put together. And hopefully you'll see it as a valued project as we do. This is where you're blinded in. This is what we're seeing. If any of you would like to say not here, be glad to join at some point to reach us.
What's, from South Middle Road into, into your solar field, who's going to do the utility? Is that going to be National Grid or is that something you guys have to do on your own or?
They, National Grid does it here and we do the rest.
You do the rest?
Yeah.
So you're going to go underground? You're going to above ground?
We overhead.
Overhead.
And I think, I, I'm sorry, I think there was some talk there that that line that you guys put in for your, your project would be big enough if the town ever decides to add for our own solar field up there? That'll be big enough to handle it?
Right, so we were required to do a study with National Grid of the extra $50,000, that study.
Of course.
And the answer was the consisting three face model on South Middle Road was out of the for us and for the town's top for future use.
Okay.
It'd be sad to see that plan go. I think that's a big open space that we don't have any left here.
But it's all over the different parts, progress to access.
I think it's making progress, moving forward.
Yeah, yeah, well, President Trump here is a reason to speed this up a bit. He's going to defund these projects after the end of 2026. So we've got to get it built this year.
Get more than that.
Looks good. Looks good. Good luck.
Thanks. Any other questions?
Okay, anybody else? See you next month.
See you next month.
Thanks very much.
Very good.
Time.
James Tong Lo, one meeting house way.
What are you doing today? Here for a minor site of the family view on two lots on the Berlin Street. And the culture board gets all Spanish. Make up us some small plans as we possibly do again. I'm just like. It's the conservation plan shows the same buildings. Relations. Also the same here. Then later, if you got a hold, you can read it. Show which was. You guys say that. These requirements. Well, I'm thirty three sixty thousand square feet in peace.
And then four?
About the. Nine thousand larger than the duplex is required.
What is it? Five watts altogether?
Three days, it's great conversation.
So your number one question you knew I'm gonna ask. How many bedrooms?
Uh, one of the units definitely gonna have, we drive drugs in the other ones. Again, it's not a congested piece of monthies. Boards of the nature. This house is gonna be three hundred feet away from the other houses in this area up here. In one way out here, see with the two initial ones. Yeah, we have a. See. Lottery mediation for the. Conservation here in this area north here. So I'm looking for, as you know, I built a few of these up there.
It's really mind developing constant.
And again, there's a market for this house because if you build a house on that lot, you're gonna get eight hundred thousand dollars for it. The prices are, if you build a duplex and you split them off, it's talking three ninety nine, four ninety nine for us.
You gotta put them on slabs?
Yes.
Jesus Christ.
There's a lot of tables relatively low. There may be one in the back that has a foundation.
So what do you need?
Guys, uh, coming here to okay, they both do a question. You're supposed to look at the.
How how come everybody else has to come in with all this stuff and you just show up with with this?
We have minor site plans, still needs that.
Yeah, I have a site that I already hit. Just made a lot of. Everything is on this.
Yeah, for each.
There is no application for me.
There is two for a minor.
My stomach, I apologize. This is stamp plans, all the other two stamp plans. You know, that's why you have. Again. Lots need to qualification for a duplex. Tell me what you want out there together. Think I have the plans that I need for this this period of the day.
My opinion, it shouldn't even be a minor site plan review. It should be a site plan review, period. That's right. He's asking for a dude. Cause the next guy's gonna come in here like one of the other contractors is not gonna wanna. Provide landscape plans, ready that shit, weren't you supposed? Again. That's all I'm gonna say. You guys have.
It has it has grading on it there. Okay, it has the driveways on it. Has a the uh landscaping law in the back of one of the profits. It's all on the plan.
Yeah, but we're skipping, we're missing one detail. Public area. You know?
I own everything around it. The last part, when I went to the conservation board for s- for six months to get that plan approved. So I'll come to the board, but they only do.
Well, yeah, totally. Well, this is the informal, so then we'd have to come with. No, he's looking for a green light right now.
Like a green light like now, it's it's a minor site plan review, does require all that stuff. Wait, what are we checking? I don't know what you're checking.
It's up to the it's up to the board how they wanna handle it.
I mean, the innovations are on here, landscaping plan is on here, and driveways. I enlarged it because sort of we can see the best of them. In addition to that, I got two plans.
I mean, it meets all the criteria.
That's a bottom line.
It is the bottom line.
I mean, I've given you a complete plan.
And the thing, the thing I'm kinda confused about. Yeah, the last time you were here over this piece, everything was an A and R. Right?
Yeah.
It was an A and R, didn't do 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 do. So mov- moving on now, a- as far as I'm concerned, A and R, if you're gonna do this and you have the square footage, why are you even here?
Because.
Right?
Because why I mean, if those would issue a single family house in this lot, if it's a duplex, I have to come in front of.
Yeah, they change.
So you so if it's it's actually.
And it.
It's just.
Yeah.
Yeah, so he has to file a site plan review.
It's what's my take.
That's not the procedure in the. It's it's made to to go to do driveways on a duplex. I mean, what are you looking at it? Does it meet the criteria for a duplex? Yes. Square footage, the drive.
I mean, it meets all of it there.
Just whining it out.
There's not a hang up that.
Well, yes, I mean, you you haven't even told us exactly how many bedrooms are gonna be in there for sure.
I know that one's gonna be.
Well. I know, but you have said you've said one, but you didn't say about the other.
I'm absolutely sure.
Yes, you are.
Say to three guys, I don't know what to tell you. But say you, this is what I was told to bring in. It's here. I don't see what you're gonna see if I file another form and do do uh. You know, if you're asking for a full site plan review, I mean.
You know, it's not. Not asking for that. I mean. This is just.
I mean, the building inspector, the plan's gotta go to the building inspector. He's got issue building problem. He's gonna check all the requirements. Well, that's the salt chapter you guys. Oh, he's not gonna give it to me if it doesn't meet the criteria. All the paperwork I have has meets that criteria.
But you're not. You're not showing how many bedrooms are in, and that's one thing I've done even my whole time I've been here, Jim, you know that.
Um.
And respectfully ask for a motion to approve because it meets all the criteria. The one, you have a little paragraph in your zoning and that does is made for this type of a plan and the provided is probably more information.
Somebody wants to make a motion.
I'm I'll make a motion that we approve. Is uh two duplexes on that property.
Second. I'll second it. All favor.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Better than your timeline, I appreciate it.
Those are affordable, right?
They're only.
Yeah.
Thank you, you're back, I appreciate it.
Hey, all all business, new business.
Yeah, we get some.
And that we had to talk about, we're good.
I just gotta look at the minutes.
Okay. See you, Jim.
The driving law. What's that called? What plan was bringing for you guys? What what I think and she gave the large, she's applying for.
Oh, she gave this like. She should, they they should know enough to bring one with them anyway. What, they make one?
Okay. Do we prove, you're gonna give her nine cars and then totally fifteen cars altogether?
Nine cars for nine cars for sales and then the fifteen total, no more than fifteen cars on the lot.
Yes. Can you read that date?
No.
No. But doesn't that say like a? Doesn't it doesn't look like oh three?
I can't.
Right here.
The wind died on.
Second one right there. I did. Doesn't it look like oh three?
Yeah, it's one or three something. It get worst.
Again?
She just had.
Yeah, I know, there's no way.
I never lose power.
Lock wired in.
I think I'm putting in gas. I'll curse myself. I really haven't. When the ice age.
That place.
I'm running with the top off, so I don't understand it, but really. I never lost it on Burst Street when I quit the house.
Um, I've reviewed the minutes for the last month. They look okay.
Motion on certain minutes.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Think the only other outstanding thing is um. The project up at twenty three Point Street. Really doesn't have anything to do with us now. Um, there was some comment. Comments from the DPW and some other boards. From fire department and stuff, and I think that'll be going to public hearing at the next elections meeting, so. We're pretty much out of the group on that one.
That's nice. Motion to close, second.
All favor.
Aye.